The Riviera Beach Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for December 11, 2014 is now in order. Take a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Staff, can we convene the Pledge? Mr. Ballance, please call the roll.
Article Hamilton.
Right.
Kimberly Jackson. Brian Fulton.
Here.
Julia Swigman.
Here.
Mary Davis.
Present.
Renee James.
Alicia Brooks.
Here.
Edric Kennedy.
Here.
Frederick McCollum. Forbes President.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Jeff Gagnon, I am his administrator. There are no additions or deletions, however, I would like to point out a couple items that were collided and also a couple of the faces that we have with us tonight. Our new consulting city attorney, I'd like to introduce him one more time, who was present at our last meeting, Mr. Brian Shutt. It's an honor to be working with him. He is one of the few Florida bar certified city, county, and local government attorneys. So that's a special testing requirement that basically proves without a doubt his credibility and he has much experience in this realm, so we're very happy to have him here tonight. Additionally, we have a court reporter present, it's Florida court reporting, so our meeting minutes will be taken provisionally. Also in attendance, Mr. Mario Glasbys, Mr. Giandris Bradley, and also I'd like to welcome Ms. Nicole Galehouse, our newest employee here in the senior planning position. She has almost obtained her master's in urban regional development. Urban regional planning. Want to say something? Say hi?
Hi.
So we're very happy to have her on board. Looking forward to a lot of good things tonight. Additionally, for information handed out, a supplemental packet was provided that has questions and answers from the last meeting. There's further supplemental information within that packet, a few different code sections, photographs corresponded received, and you can refer to that throughout the meeting as necessary. Also, there's 11 by 17 copies of the city zoning map, the coastal construction control line aerial, and also the vegetation, excuse me, the single island shoreline and creek map, just from 2003 to 2004. So those are the comments. And also, being that we do have members absent tonight, I'd ask that Mr. Hamilton receive voting rights.
Let the record reflect then, Mr. Hamilton will have voting rights today. Is that in on additions and deletions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Disclosure by board members and adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion when approved.
Second.
We have motion and second, call the roll.
Article Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian Fulton?
Yes.
Julia Swigman?
Yes.
Mary Davis?
Yes.
Alicia Brooks?
Yes.
Edric Kennedy?
Yes.
Amendment voting, motion approved.
Approval of minutes from the last meeting. Any comments and a motion?
Make a motion when approved, the minutes are suspended.
Second.
I'm second.
We have motion and second, please call the roll.
Article Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian Fulton?
Yes.
Julia Swigman?
Yes.
Mary Davis?
Yes.
Alicia Brooks?
Yes.
Edric Kennedy?
Yes.
Amendment voting, motion approved.
Item six, unfinished business. Jeff Gagnon?
Yes, tonight under unfinished business, we'll once again be reviewing ordinance in City Council of Seabrida Beach, Palm County, Florida, amending chapter 31 of the city's code of ordinances entitled zoning. Article five, district regulations, division nine, RM20, high density multi-family dwelling districts, and division 10, RM20, high density multi-family hotel districts, and division 25, RH resort hotel districts, by amending property development standards associated with ocean setbacks, coastal construction and development density, in order to promote increasingly sustainable development designs on Singer Island, providing for conflict, serviceability, and protection, and providing effective data. And so again, we're revisiting language that we discussed last meeting. Prior to the meeting commencing, there was a version two of the package provided. That has since been discarded and we're back to the original version, so this is probably version one is where we're at. So it's not a version three, there's no additional changes. If anything, language that was proposed in version two has been drafted by staff. So I want to show you, just for the record, the areas of the city which have been impacted. RM20's on the districts, it is located on the northeast quadrant of Singer Island. It's also present on the northeast corner of the mainland, east of Broadway, and there's also RM20 that exists on the south side of MLK Boulevard. This is not very visible. Here's RM20 here, northeast, northeast portion of Singer Island. RMH20 exists solely on the eastern side of Singer Island. Also RH zoning exists solely on this eastern portion of Singer Island as well. So those are the geographical areas that this amendment would affect. So this is an image that may be familiar to some. This delineates both the existing coastal construction control lines for 1979 and 97. The 1979 line appears in a purple color, and westward of that line, in blue dash line, is shown, shows the 1997 coastal construction control line. Again, this was provided in 11 by 17. They also have full-size printouts in the back of the room, so individual properties can be identified. The difference in, the difference in distance between these coastal construction control lines is approximately, at a minimum, it varies from about 60 to 140 feet approximately. So depending on the individual property, we have a different impact on coastal development in the future. So at this point, I'd like to read through the staff analysis briefly one more time. This is the same staff analysis that was proposed and presented last meeting. So this is a city-initiated code amendment process, and it's proposed to amend both the RM20 high density multi-family dwelling districts, the RMH high density multi-family hotel districts, and the RH resort hotel districts. Location, we've just discussed. And moving to staff analysis, lots of shoreline and dune areas occurred along most of Singer Island, creating conflict between the existing coastal setback, which is the 1997, excuse me, the 1979 coastal construction control line, and future building placement. So at this point, staff has determined that it would be beneficial for us to review these regulations, see if there's a benefit of proposing that development, development setbacks being with the 1997 coastal construction control line, and staff at this point would recommend approval of this coastal construction ordinance, and even that is limited. Prior to getting into this language, I think it might be beneficial to just briefly touch on the supplemental information and the questions to be answered section. And after that, we'll discuss the actual proposed amendments. So a simple question and answer format. These questions were based off of the board questions and public questions that were posed at last, depending on the ordinance. So, how do you know if being proposed versus what's currently existing in the code? The answer to that is, the proposed regulations are prepared in a stripped through and underlined format, so any existing language that's proposed to be deleted will be stripped through. Any new language that's proposed to be added is underlined, and any other text appearing will just appear as normal text. So I know that at the last meeting, there were some questions on existing language, but if it does not appear in your structured underlined format, it's current language in the code, and staff has recommended maintaining that language as is currently written. Also, there was much discussion on whether or not this proposed amendment would have additional density or allow for additional construction past the existing setback lines. The answer to both those questions is no, this proposal will not allow additional density. The city's comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2010, actually governs the density and also it governs the percent of the property that can be developed, so for purview and purview ratios. So what we're looking at here, there are some amendments shown, however, that would just make the existing code compliant with what our comprehensive plan already allows. There's a question in regards to removal of the name Department of Natural Resources. That was due to reconfiguration in the 1990s, multiple agencies were bound together and now is referred to as Florida Department of Environmental Protection. There is reference in the new code to eliminate the actual name of the agency, but it just refers to the state of Florida. Staff thought that in the long term, no matter what the agency is called, as the name could shift at the end of the time, the state of Florida would have that purview, so we thought that just leaving Florida would suffice. There's also questions about the MHIAP program. MHIAP is an acronym for the Minority Employment and Affordable Housing Opportunity Plan. This is an established section of code. I have provided it to you in the supplemental information. Overall, what it allows is additional density, a reduction in the number of parking spaces required, at least really development bonuses, if participation is desired by a developer. It's not necessarily a requirement, however, it's very enticing because having the ability to have more units often outweighs the costs associated with participation. So historically, it's been actively used on developments in Singer Island. At the last meeting, there was a question on the density transfer section. I get to make my rudimentary drawing that was provided in supplemental packet, and I believe there's copies of that on the back as well. So what this indicates is, the box is supposed to reference a property. It's a generic property, not anyone in particular. And the box that appears on the top of the page is what the current code would allow and how density transfer is required by the code. What it does is, it splits it into three different sections of the property and accounts for different development percentages, a deal percentage of development allowed for those square footages. So from the propping line from North Ocean Drive to the 1979 coastal construction control line, that development is currently allowed at 100% of property square footage, that calculation for density. From the 79 line to the vegetation line, it allows for 50%. The current problem, the current item that we're working with on that, is there are some properties that no longer have a vegetation line. So at that point, it's more ambiguous of where it was, the vegetation line historically, and it's just not as clear as it could be. So staff's proposal, which is shown below, has a potential solution for that. Finally, the last calculation that's provided currently is that from the vegetation line to either the mean high water line or the easternmost propping line is calculated at 25% for density. So those are the three different tiers that are currently allowed. What the code amendment proposes is 100% of that property square footage allows the calculation for density in between the propping line along North Ocean Drive to the 1997 coastal construction line. From that point to the mean, the mean high water line or the easternmost propping line is 50%. So instead of having a three-tiered approach, it's broken down into two tiers. So what that does is, it simplifies what staff is requesting from a developer. It clarifies it as well, so it's not ambiguous, there's no guessing as to what the potential lies may be. And also by providing 50% calculable for the portion of the property from the 1997 line to the easternmost propping line, it basically makes up for that density loss, potential loss, due to that shifting coastal construction control line being used for the setback. So ultimately, staff didn't want to have a negative impact on the overall density. The main goal is to ship that development further west to allow for additional dune area, additional sand area to accumulate over time. And I guess staff closes the question number seven, which is, how is the existing dune line in term? If there's an existing dune, that's rather easy because you can just have a surveyor go off the site and just give you a good cross of dune, provide you with a legal survey for the property, and you're all set. However, it does become more complicated on properties where the dune has been eroded, where there is no vegetation line, where the property to the north and south have already been built out. So at that point, both historic aerials can be used for reference points, and also whatever existing dune high points to the north and south can be utilized as well. Under section 30, is the proposed amendment to division nine, which is the RM20 high density multi-family dwelling districts. The first page proposes no changes. The second page, within sections 31 to 243, property development standards, that's where the amendments begin to occur. So as referenced in the question and answer section, the proposal to amend 17 to 20 and 13 to 17, this is not a new allowance to property owners, this is what the existing comprehensive plan would allow, so this is really making sure that our zoning code is in concert with the city's comprehensive plan, which technically we are legally required to do. Under number two, that's just a further explanation of what is referred to in chapter 29, which is the MHIAP program, and again, that code is provided in supplemental packet provided tonight. So then number three, that refers back to the somewhat rudimentary drawing of the density transfers as shown here. So instead of having that three-tiered approach of having 100%, 50%, and 25% of specific sections of land area account towards the development density, what these amendments do is reduce it to just having two portions, the first at 100% and the second at 50%. Within 3C, just an additional reference to no major habitat, so that would tighten some of the environmental restrictions that are already in place. Under four, this is a typo, I think we will correct that, in this case, what property located. So we'll amend that. Within the minimum building setbacks, there is a discussion that, excuse me, the current code provides guidance for properties on land worth, the front yard should be 30 feet. When staff reviewed the current zoning map, all properties had their zoning designation, that sentence didn't really make much sense, and it was difficult even for us to understand what this section of the code was referring to. So what was proposed is a new letter F was created, and then actually had front side rear setbacks proposed. And this was important because currently, the code does not have development requirements for those properties that were previously indicated on the mainland of Seabrida Beach. So there's multiple parcels that don't have specific front side rear setbacks currently. So what this did was mirror the existing zoning districts that were similar, and pulled some of those development requirements. So that way, in the future, as those properties are developed, staff will have some sort of guidance to provide. Under number seven, this is also a reference to the city's comprehensive plan, where the maximum lot coverage was amended from 60 to 70%, and is currently shown as 70% in the city's comprehensive plan. Within number nine, the phrase "for comparable recreational space" is added. Previously, developers were complying to having really a tennis court on it. So if a developer wanted to come in and provide an interesting alternative, the code didn't really have any sort of legitimacy towards that, so I would guess that when the code was originally written, the tennis court was almost how many. If the developer chooses to have a tennis court, they still could do that, however, there may be other options over time. There could be fitness stations, it could be rock climbing wall, multiple other alternatives for recreational events, it could be volleyball, so just allowing some sort of flexibility. Also, within 9B, there was some language that was gender-related that was tightened up, but for the most part, it still requires the same things while also allowing for additional flexibility for developers to come in with the best, most appealing design package as possible. Within section 31-244, parking, again, the bonus density section, we previously didn't refer to chapter 26, so the reference to chapter 26 was added, including the reference to the minority employment and affordable housing opportunity plan. Also, one thing that was lacking that was taken from the RMH20 code was, this existing code didn't have a maximum height for parking garage, so staff wanted to add that as some sort of parameter for development in the future. Again, the existing code doesn't reference it at all, so this would be similar to the RMH20 code. Additionally, building on that parking garage concept, what E does is require an architectural buffer and treatments to make it more appealing. Again, the current code doesn't necessarily require that, so adding additional language would be beneficial to make sure that that happens. Within section 31-245, landscaping, it was an attempt to, I guess, beef up the existing environmental language, so if there was an environmentally sensitive land present, if there's habitat that's rare for one reason or another, this language requires additional preservation, and it also requires that buffer zone is created around that area with appropriate native vegetation. Within number five, this language stating to reestablish the ecosystem, which just wishes what the existing language is already requesting, staff's opinion, and just clarifying it further. Within number six, it really is a correction of a typo. Previous language read, 50% of all required trees shall be of a shaded species. So this was modified to read, 50% of all required trees shall consist of native shade tree species. Number seven references the height of the tree. These height requirements have been amended with our landscape code historically, so the amendment from 10 feet to 12 feet, and 5 feet to 6 feet is to be in concert with our existing landscape code. Those are the final edits of proposed amendments to that section. For division 10, RM20 high density multi-family hotel districts.
Jeff Gagnon? Do you want the board to ask any questions as we go through each individual one? Or do you want to go through all of them?
It may be beneficial going through all of them. Both the RM20 and the RMH20 codes are very similar in their makeup. Maybe after you go through those two, you can freefill them as one larger item, and then RH code, you can have additional discussing, discussion after.
Okay, go ahead.
Now, within section 31-262, use regulations, there is the current code requirements states restaurants and shops accessory to hotels or motels, which uses shall have, which uses shall not have signs or displays visible from the public street. Currently, I believe there are restaurant uses that do have signage. It has to adhere to specific sign standards. It has to be a line and style sign. There's specific sign limitations. And staff thought that it would be beneficial in order to have any restaurant or shop that is present, be able to have a small sign in order to indicate where they are. Moving on, within Letter C, Uses Prohibited, which was an additional additional reference to 1979 Coastal Construction Setback Line was added. Then，在section 31-263, Property Development Standards. Number one, B. This, once again, discusses the density that's allowed. And this modification would be required in order for the zoning code to be in agreement with our comprehensive plan. Within number two, which just specifically refers to the Mihaw program within Chapter 26. Number three is Density Transfers, which is similar or same amendments to the previous code we went through. So, this, once again, will change development densities from a three-tiered approach, allowing for 100%, 50%, and 25% of specific land area to count towards density. What the amendment would do would break that into two pieces. One would be for 100% density development allowance, and the other would be for 50%. So, within number four, I believe this was discussed in our last meeting. Staff thought that the existing code allowing 10 feet additional height for mechanical facilities, ornamental towers, and tenants in order to be really as flexible as possible and allow for better development design, better architectural standards. Changing that from 10 to 20 feet would allow more ornamental features. Would really have a very small impact on the overall building height allowance itself, being that the existing building is allowed to be up to 200 feet. So, this is a 5% and 10% change to the existing code. Within the Minimum Building Setbacks, 5A, which refers to front. Number three, Accessory Structures. The code currently states for properties on lake worth, the front yard should be 30 feet. So, once again, that was removed. And there's a new section describing, actually, for this code, there is no property on lake worth with a front yard. So, it was just removed because it's not relevant. Additionally, there's a current regulation stating that ornamental walls and gatehouses shall be at least five feet, setback five feet from the front property line. When one really visualizes that and thinks about it, that wouldn't really allow for any sort of staffing, vehicles, or anything of that nature. So, modifying that from 5 to 15 feet would allow for additional setback, additional landscaping along North Ocean Drive. For the ocean setback, the 1997 Coastal Construction Control Line is referenced. Within number seven, again, to be to match our comprehensive plan, that would have to be changed from 60 to 70%. Within number nine, specifically 9A, the same amendment's proposed for comparable recreational space. So, that would allow for something other than a tennis court. And the same, similar modification has been proposed for 9B as well. Within Sections 31-264, Parking. Letter C, historically, it just said for bonus, see Chapter 26. So, this was clarified further, saying that bonuses shall be established in Chapter 26, entitled Minority Employment in Affordable Housing Opportunity Plan. It also provides a maximum height for parking garage at 60 feet. And it also requires concealment and buffering from those parking garages from North Ocean Drive. The same proposal for Section 31-265, Landscaping, is proposed for number three. Certification provided within number five, which states that should reestablish the ecosystem. The same typo in number six that was previously discussed is proposed. So, modifications are read, consist of native shade trees. And also, the height of those trees is modified to match existing regulations from 10 to 12 and from 5 to 6. So, those are the first two proposed code sections. And then, let's see those code sections. And the board would like to discuss those as time.
Any board comments?
No questions.
Mr. Hamilton?
Just a question from, same question from previous. Do you need the body of board between the minimum and the hour? Is this called lake worth? Or lake worth in a coastal? Or lake worth for green?
Yeah, that's something that currently is referred to as lake worth. I know that we brought up last meeting as far as clarifying that further. That's something that staff can definitely do. We're not opposed to that. And we accept that recommendation from the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, I have a question. Under 31-242 on the Use Regulations, Special Exceptions, how would mobile home parks work on Singer Island? How would that go?
Scroll up to that section. 31-242, that'd be a special exception to his mobile home park. So, this is language that currently exists on, within the city code. See, the city's code ordinances. Staff didn't want to amend that at this time, being that there's there's no mobile home park existing that I'm aware of. However, removing that right at this point is just another layer that seems to be necessary at this point in time. So, staff really didn't focus on that section of the code. And they also didn't advertise or provide any additional information that that would be considered.
But, once someone decides to put one there, it's too late, isn't it? It's too late to amend.
Well, what we have in place, the existing zoning district and development regulations, almost prohibit, not prohibit, but almost prohibit that from happening. Additionally, the current property values would make it very unlikely to occur. In addition to that, it requires a special exception approval, which is another layer of review and approval. Additional conditions will have to be met. So, if that were to be proposed, it would be probably the highest-end type of development of that nature that we've ever seen.
But, then it would be too late to change it.
Potentially. I don't foresee that happening.
So, which would be, we have land use regulations that almost prohibit it. And we have a comprehensive plan that permits it. And which is, which hung governs?
If the comprehensive plan prohibited it, then the comprehensive plan would be the ultimate governing authority.
And vice versa. If the, if it permits it, and the land use regulations make it nearly impossible, then the comprehensive plan would govern.
The city's comprehensive plan is the highest level of governance. And the zoning regulations are to implement the requirements within the comprehensive plan.
Okay, a couple of things. Regarding 31-244 on parking, the height of parking garages, is that on Singer Island? Does that also include the CRA district?
Let me pull up the zoning map. So, the CRA area is delineated on the zoning map as, here's up to current status. This delineate here is a red line. So, this is, again, Singer Island, a solid portion of the city's jurisdiction there. This is the Ocean Mall, Municipal Beach Park. So, the property current, currently address is 2700 North Ocean Drive. Actually falls into RH zoning districts. So, the codes that we've discussed so far are both the RMH20 and the RM20 zoning district, which is just in the middle.
So, that would be excluded?
The RH zoning code is to be discussed tonight. However, we haven't reached that point yet.
All right, and then, under 31-245, Landscaping. Item number three, regarding environmentally sensitive land. Is there, or preservation, is there a definition? And is it a safe definition? Or who defines what environmentally sensitive land is?
I don't believe that there's a specific definition within this section. There is a subsection of our landscaping code that does define it. So, it may be something that staff can look at further. However, the intent was just to say if there is something special about it. So, if there is endangered species present, known habitat for endangered species, then that would kind of get the attention of whoever's reading this and say, okay, this is environmentally sensitive land. It has a special purpose. So, it kind of just strengthens the existing language that's present.
Do you think that we should have a definition? For developers, I mean, you know, I think that it's important that, you know, we maintain the balance between the residential and quality of life, residential qualities of the island and the quality of life we have now. But, there's always a sort of a battle between the developer and density. And so, I think if you have someone like the Toll Brothers or someone who's coming in, they have tons of money. And so, I think we should have some sort of a definition.
We could have a definition. I personally feel that environmentally sensitive land, if there was specific elements as just discussed, endangered species, things of that nature, that there's already levels of protection in place.
You mean statewide and federal?
Sure, it would be federal governance statewide that would provide additional protection. So, this is really just calling out the fact that if that situation is present, then this is an additional requirement as far as having this bumper area of native vegetation planted around that environmentally sensitive land, or wetlands, or an area that's defined as conservation land. You just have an extra buffer layer.
I really think it's important to have 10 of them. And also, under, let's see, the uses per, let's see, 31-362, the Use Regulation under item.
What page?
I'm sorry, page eight, excuse me. Page eight at the top on Uses Prohibited. No commercial use building or structure except that which provides for access to the public beach shall be permitted east of the 1979 Coastal Construction Setback Line. Is that supposed to be 1979 or 1997?
1997.
Okay.
Yes, that was set up.
On, on page 11, item number, under 31-265, Landscaping. It's item number five on the reestablishment of the Dune, and to reestablish the Dune Ecosystem. Whose responsibility is that? Is that the city's responsibility? State or the developer? Or the resident?
I would call it on the developer.
Thank you.
So, have questions?
No.
Ms. Brooks? Mr. Cole?
I just have one. Reference in your graph, 1997, the 50%, what is the determination for 50% of development? Is it 50% of the land? 50% of the overall development? What determines that? Where would that be located? If someone needs to know.
Yes, so, you're referring to the density transfer section.
Yeah.
So, there's the existing density transfer and a proposed density transfer.
Right.
What those percentages are describing are, whatever the total land area is, that percentage is multiplied by the square footage of land area to understand what the density is allowed for that specific parcel. So, there's a calculation that would have to be done for each segment of the property based on either 100%, 50%, and 25% of the existing land area. And then, that's how the final density calculation goes.
And the existing land area is minus or where the water line is, that's the existing from where that water line is now, currently, or in the past, the property where the line, the water line was? Is it from the was or the current water line where that calculation would be?
The calculations for both currently and what's proposed, the easternmost point of the property where density calculation is basically stopped, that's either the property line south or the mean high water line. Thank you.
Mr. Weger?
Yes, I have just one question. On the Section 31-262, concerning no commercial use, that means that no one can come in in that development and say, I want to use a building for rehab for people with drug problems or something like that. They can't use, they can't use that, right? For drug rehab or something like that.
Yes, so, so.
Such a building, but.
Right, so, Session 31-262, Use Regulations. Letter C, Uses Prohibited, discusses the fact that there would be no commercially used building or structure except that which provides for access to the public beach. So, and then, again, this was, I believe, the typo that was pointed out by Ms. Davis. So, that is saying that eastward of that line, there could be no commercial use. So, if you refer to, if you refer to the Uses Permitted, which is just above that section, so, 31-262, Letter A, Uses Permitted, it does allow for hotels, motels, restaurants, shops. There is potential for commercial use of those properties.
Thank you. That answers that question. But, I have one more. Section 20, under Special Effects, on this section over here. We use a gatehouse. Somebody want to start a gatehouse setting on those properties. Would they be allowed to do that out of this section here?
That use would not be contemplated within the zoning districts. That use would not be contemplated within the zoning districts, so the answer in short is no.
Thanks very much. I just have a couple of questions. Page, page eight, under number one B, we're talking about density. Permitted density shall be twenty residential dwelling units per acre, including the density bonus referred to in subsection two. So that means twenty includes the Mihaw bonus.
That's correct.
Uh, then further down, we've changed the, the density bonus provision is not applied for, the maximum permitted density shall be seventeen units. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go back to page two in RM twenty. Says multi-family dwelling maximum permitted density shall be seventeen, twenty dwelling units per acre, including density referred to in subsections two. So we're, we're saying twenty and seventeen there also?
Yes, and, and that is based off of what is defined in the comprehensive plan and the supplemental packet that was provided.
Hmm.
The, the second page, the backside of the second page, there is a table titled Maximum Density and Density in Land Use Categories. So the two land use categories referenced, well, for these two zoning sections, it would be the high density multiple family residential, so it shows twenty units per acre as the most dense, most dense possible use on that site. If you keep reading within the sections, it actually describes basically the same language that's implemented in the zoning code. So on the, the reverse side of the, the page, the next sheet in the packet, it talks to the fact that the high density multiple, one of the residential can have up to twenty units per acre, but then it describes the Mihaw provisions, and if those aren't utilized and otherwise it's just seventeen units per acre.
Well, uh, second, second question is the fact that, I'm trying to understand where we got the, the density of fifteen, and was that because the comp plan at the time this was originally written only allowed that?
It could be. I haven't looked back at all the versions to determine that. So that very well could be the case, but it's tough for me to say without looking back through the years.
So I'm trying to understand, you know, most times we allow the maximum density, whether they choose to use it or not, so. So I'm, I'm curious if there was a change from the previous comp plan when this was written, originally written?
Right.
Where we, I know where we are now with the comp plan.
Right, and, and this, these two sections, or this specific section, was originally approved through ordinance twenty-one fifty-two and nineteen eighty-two. So it could have been something as old as that that was just missed throughout the years and not amended, or it could be something that was recently amended within our comprehensive plan in two thousand and ten, and it just wasn't reflected in our zoning code yet.
Okay, uh, all right. I have no other questions at this time, so we'll go to public comments. When you come up, just, uh, you give us your name and address, and you have three minutes, which will be on the timer there. J.B. Dixon?
Good evening, I'm J.B. Dixon. I live in Riviera Beach on Sinner Island at three thousand North Ocean Drive. The document that's being passed out to you right now is a petition from a hundred and seventy-one residents of just one of the condominium buildings on Sinner Island that will be affected by this amendment. I will not read this off you, but the first part of it, although we're as, uh, essentially point out what the legislative intent was of the legislature in the Florida statutes, chapter one sixty-one, point fifty-three, part three. The very end of the petition, again signed by a hundred and seventy-one people of just one condominium association, asks you to do the following. To adopt the amendments to the minimum building setbacks proposed in section thirty-one, two forty-three, five, and in particular, the establishment of the nineteen ninety-seven coastal construction control line. Two, to apply the proposed minimum building setbacks, including the nineteen ninety-seven coastal construction control line proposed in the amendment to section thirty-one, two forty-three, five, to all buildings, to apply this to all buildings which have not yet been constructed on Sinner Island, including specifically the proposed Amrit Wellness Resort and Spa. In our last appearance before you, we told you about our dismay at what appears to be the excusing of that particular property to these new coastal setbacks. And the plans that we have seen actually exceed the old coastal setback and go into, go into the secrets. So we ask that this apply to all buildings. And third, to not adopt the proposed amendment which would increase the maximum permitted density, including the density bonus established in Mihaw. Also, I would like you to take a look at some photographs we have taken just in the last few days.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday, last few days. And if you could just pass those along, we'd have, have an opportunity to make copies for all of you. This shows that although it is claimed that only the northern end of Sinner Island is endangered, uh, beach erosion, as we can see, their beaches have been eroded, that the south end is not having a problem. If you look at those photographs, you can see just in the last few days, the enormous wave action that took place and the seaweed line that would indicate that this would be very unwise to let someone build out that far. If there had been a building out there, its foundation would have been washed. Thank you for your courtesy and kindness in the way you must address.
Thank you. Norm Adams?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I too live at three thousand North Ocean Drive, happily president of the condominium, and I'm here to urge you to wind up, at the end of the day, with the minimum density and the maximum distance from the water, from the ocean, as possible. I'll let others speak of density, but I just want to speak about the beaches. I think there's no question that the majority of folks seem to think there is global warming, warming, and we could be in trouble down the road. I lived, when a tiara was out for four years, several years ago, I lived in a condominium up north. I was there recently, I noticed the northern beaches have really deteriorated. And I personally attribute that to all the construction that took place. The more the construction, I think, the more the beaches are endangered. In the new construction for Amrit, as well as any other future constructions, I know the zoning permits construction, I urge you to minimize its impact. A good example, nobody knows what's going to happen as more and more buildings are built with global warming, warming. Just the other day, I saw the beach, the water came all the way up to grape leaves. During the hurricanes, the beaches were damaged, uh, you know, and I don't only have a concern for the tiara, we have a darn good beach today. Next to us is Phoenix Towers, followed by the Ritz Carlton, and then the public beach. If all these things occur where developers can get the maximum they're asking for, the maximum variance from what's in place, we don't know what's going to happen to those beaches, especially the public beach. That's there, a big, a job was done out there a few years ago, it's a beautiful place. People enjoy it, it's crowded every time I look there. I don't think it's going to get any better beach wise, but you're taking the risk that it's going to be worse. So I'm not just speaking for my condominium building, but also for the others south of us, I'm sure they would agree. And how do you think the folks who use the public beach, who can't afford to live on the ocean, but have this public beach, how do you think they'll feel if the beach erodes? They're not going to be happy campers. You know, I read predictions by the Florida State Department of Environmental from about thirty years from now, this, that, and the other thing. Everybody can make a prediction, but nobody goes back after the years and says, hey, here's what we predicted, we were wrong, and I'm afraid that's going to happen, given our global warming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got a lot, uh, we've got a lot of cards, so I'm going to read two names so that the second person can kind of queue up, so we might just speed it up a little bit. Roni Silber Schatzey?
Yeah, uh, thank you. I just heard.
Would you please come up to the podium and give us?
I already heard whatever I wanted to say.
Well, if you might just speak publicly, you need to come up to the podium, give us your name.
I got you to it.
Okay, thank you. James Birch and Joel McGee.
Good evening, I'm James Birch. My wife and I live at forty-six hundred North Ocean Drive in the beachfront condominium, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My coffee and perspective is a management consultant. Over twenty-five years of experience with Fortune five hundred and private sector companies and, and US federal government, I've often seen leadership struggle with the adoption of long-term beneficial decisions when considering them relative to the short-term conflicting opinions within their organizations and communities. It's been my experience that the most successful of these organizations were led by enlightened and forceful leaders who have conviction and vision to champion the adoption of long-term strategies, knowing that their benefits would be principally reaped by their successors. In this name, I'd like to urge you to consider adoption of the coastal construction control line in nineteen ninety, established nineteen ninety-seven, as, as indicated in the amendments you're looking at, and as supported by the planning staff and analysts. And I would like to point out to the board that there are also many other members of the beachfront community here, and all of whom have chosen to speak this evening, but I'd like to invite them to stand if they choose to do so, or identify those of us who, who come this evening because of our interest in this matter. And with that, in the interest of all of your time, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity and conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Joel McGee, then Jeff Fisher.
Hi, I'm Joel McGee, and I'm an owner of five thousand North Ocean Drive and also a president of Harbor Point at, on Ocean Drive there. I would say that we, I want to make you know again, that we oppose this zoning change. Our current property values and rights would be greatly diminished. I've been there for eleven years, and not once has the state, or the county, or the city put one drop of sand in front of Harbor Point. And I just, that's for the record. If the construction line is changed and we have a fire and need to rebuild, or even our neighbors at the beachfront, we have tidal ponds behind us. The way this current program is set up, we couldn't even rebuild if we wanted to, it would be built in water. So I want to make that point very clear. If the setbacks were imposed on us, beings neighbors to beachfront and oceans edge, nothing would change as far as the beach or the erosion or lack thereof, because those buildings are new buildings, they've just been built, and the only thing that would happen is, is we'd be forced to build a hundred and, uh, over a hundred feet behind those two buildings, which would hamper us and our, our rights and values of our property to their benefit, because we would be set back away to prevent, so they'd have, quote, better views of the ocean than we sat back in a tunnel. So I would hope that you would keep in mind all of those things when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be James Bridges.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Fisher, and I'm a resident of Sinner Island at three thousand North Ocean Drive, and would wish to comment on the reports that follow on the nineteen ninety-seven coastal construction control line, as proposed by the state, and as recommended by the staff. I'm well aware of the state of Florida's desire to preserve the coastline to the benefit of future generations and to promote sustainable development, even though this restriction can be developed. In fact, it's impacted me personally in at least two ways. First, I'm president of the Home Roy Institute, which is a nonprofit organization based here in North Palm Beach. We received our initial endowment from a donation of a mile of oceanfront property on Hutchins Island, and that land could be developed, we have the entitlements to do condominium development. We ended up selling it to the state of Florida as preservation land under a preservation program. That may not have maximized the proceeds that we could have gotten from that land, but it was the right thing to do. And from erosion that's taken place there since then, I feel even stronger, it was the right thing to do not to try and do the development, and the total people are quite happy. Second, I'm a professor of mercurus from Indiana University, where I was director of the Center for Real Estate Study, I thought, development. But we were donated five lots on Dog Island, on the bayside of Florida. Students were asked to evaluate the projects that could be developed there. They quickly learned about the CCCL, and although there were homes built on lots next to the ones that we were donated, it was clear that erosion was reducing the, the lot size each year, and the CCCL certainly served an important purpose. I would mention that, that it was only, this one involved sixty to a hundred and forty feet, but that, that can make a huge difference when we're talking about erosion taking place. So the bottom line is that the proposed changes to the CCCL was done for a purpose, and although it may impose constraints that the developer must work around, it isn't right to ignore the, the purpose of it. As an aside, even if a developer owns some technicality, even if he grandfathered, that doesn't make it right or obviate the intended purpose of the CCCL. My fair enough, it should be adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your answer?
Jeff Fisher. Next will be Julie Lawler.
I'm James Bridges, I reside at three thousand North Ocean, Riviera Beach. I stand before the, the board to voice my concerns on increasing density anywhere in our city. In the current comprehensive plan, much time, knowledge, effort, and expense has been put forth. Professional planners work with the planning and zoning staff in order to produce a plan that outlines positive orderly growth for the city. Many of the plan's categories and hence goals and objectives are interrelated. I feel that increasing density will throw a wrench in the works of a well-done plan such as yours. Density increases affect many other aspects of a plan. Overall, they undermine detailed planning recommendations that were made in a formal approved study. Increased truck and automobile traffic are experienced. In fact, the Federal Highway Administration, I have my reference here, found that traffic volumes tend to rise at least eighty percent of the rate of density increases. Increased traffic impacts transportation and public safety concerns that were not anticipated in the formal study. City utilities and services are also placed under additional pressure from a density and traffic increase. Noting the comprehensive plan, objective one dot nine in the community enhancement section, land use requests that increase density or intensity in or adjacent residential neighborhoods shall be required to demonstrate benefit to that neighborhood. In closing, I ask the board not to adopt the proposed amendment to chapter thirty-one, which would increase the maximum permitted density, including density bonus. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Lawler. Next will be Sharon Lowe.
Hi, I'm Julie Lawler, and I live at three thousand.
Hi, I'm Julie Lawler, and I live at 3,000 North Ocean Drive. And I too was talking about the erosion. Since the 2004 hurricanes, the Palm Beach County and Riviera Beach, uh, County, City have paid over $8.5 million to put sand back onto those beaches on that, right then. And the big cause of erosion is that buildings aren't being built too close, or too close to the ocean. So in addition to that, storms and changing tides can also affect the erosion. So I strongly support the 1997 coastal setback line.
Thank you. Joseph Verdon, will be next. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Sharon Lowe. I strongly encourage the Riviera Beach Planning and Zoning Commission to, um, help help the, um, the beach, Riviera Beach Code for the 1997 coastal construction lines. Um, I also think that we should be in compliance with state regulations to protect our beaches. And as an owner who lost her home in hurricanes in, um, 2004, I know the devastating effect, uh, of storms on, um, Singer Island and the, the beaches. And I think that having a property built too close, um, that's even beyond the 1979 lines, um, such as Amber is, um, very detrimental to, um, anyone that lives on the island because of the erosion. And I believe there should be no waivers or exemptions for anyone where they stood for, um, the island is good for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph?
My name is Joseph Verdon from the Law, Crime, and Fields Department, Ver. I'm here tonight to represent Post Hotels, who owns the Hilton Inn on Singer Island. And I'd like to submit this letter from the president of, the vice president and asset manager, Patrick Weber.
Do you want to read it into the record?
Okay, please. At short of where the affiliates of Post Hotel Resorts is the owner of the Hilton Singer Island Hotel located at 3,700 North Ocean Drive, Riviera Beach. I'm writing you on behalf of Post Hotels because the honor of Hilton Ho, of the Hilton Hotel, we have serious concerns about the proposed RM and RM H20 code changes that will be called the city of Riviera Beach tonight. In particular, I believe that these code changes will render all existing properties as non-conformities, because the changes do not adequately address the existing developments and how they will be treated moving forward. I'm not here to talk to you about, um, the changes and setbacks or densities for the unbuilt properties. I'm here to talk to you about what's here. And I think it's all of impact to everybody here that has been supporting this ordinance tonight. This ordinance lacks identification of how you treat the existing developments, how they will be treated in terms of rebuilding and maintenance, how they will be treated in terms of the number of units and intensities that they were built at in case of casualty, how they will be treated in terms of insurance, insuranceability, to be able to maintain insurance for these properties. Alls I'm asking you is that you consider to look at existing developments, render a cross-section within the code that says, these developments are here already. They can go by the rules they were approved by. They can be maintained. They can be rebuilt. They can be altered in a way that is conforming to the code, that they don't become non-conformities and the property values are maintained. This will help the city move forward with the regulations that are needed to stop future development beyond the coastal construction lines. But it will also ensure that everybody that's here that's made an investment in Riviera Beach and Singer Island and has built their buildings according to plans and codes prior to this day, will still be treated as conforming in this, in the city, and will be able to continue to maintain their properties and ensure their properties and maintain their property values. So in closing, I'd ask you to table this and add those provisions, make sure that the existing development is covered and is completely, that the property values are protected. And then move forward with whatever you decide to do for undeveloped property and new development.
Can I ask a question?
All right.
I have another question. Are you suggesting that if the current building is damaged or destroyed by hurricane, whatever means, that, that you should be permitted to rebuild at the old rules?
I'm saying that you should, what I'm suggesting is there to be rules that would be put in place, whatever those rules might be to develop, to allow buildings to be maintained and kept in good condition and to protect the property values. So, I mean, everybody here that's complaining or is supportive of this, they don't realize that they're making their own buildings non-conforming to the code. And that means that nothing can be done except for through the non-conformity provisions of the ordinance.
So are you saying that if you're a 10-story, if you have a 10-story building that's demolished or it's torn down, you want to rebuild a 10, if that building was governed, governed under an old ordinance? That you'd like to rebuild it based on the old ordinance?
I would think it would be fair to have the opportunity to maintain my property and look for at the house originally built.
Thank you.
Ann Reddy. And next will be Carl Engel.
Good evening and thank you. I am Ann Reddy, and I am a Riviera Beach resident. I live on Singer Island, and I'm the president of the Singer Island Civic Association, O.C.C.A. I'd like to direct the board's attention to a provision in chapter 161 of the Florida statutes, which states as follows. A coastal municipality may establish coastal construction, zoning, and building codes in lieu of the provisions of chapter 161 if such zones or codes are approved by the D E P as being adequate to preserve and protect beaches and coastal barrier dunes adjacent to such beaches from imprudent construction that will jeopardize the stability of the beach dune system, accelerate erosion, provide inadequate protection to upland structures, endanger adjacent properties, or interfere with public beach access. The statute is clear that the D E P has exclusive jurisdiction of beaches and barrier dunes and that they must approve any activity seaward of the line they established most recently in 1997. We believe that any exemption granted to developers on Singer Island regarding the coastal construction control line would require D E P approval as such. We strongly urge the city to adopt the amendments to the minimum building setbacks proposed in section 31 dash 243, five, section five, and in particular, the establishment of the 1997 coastal construction control line. In accordance with chapter 161 of the Florida statutes, we also believe the city is required to apply the proposed minimum setbacks, including the 1997 coastal construction control line proposed in the amendments to section 31 dash 243, five, to all buildings which have not yet been constructed on the island. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Carl Engel. Next will be Barry Manuel.
Good evening. My name is Carl Engel. I'm a resident of 4,600 North Ocean Drive on the beachfront. Uh, I come before you to voice my support, uh, of the plan and urge the board to vote in favor of the plan, and in particular, in support of the 1997 setback of at least 100 feet. And in addition, that there be no waivers or exemptions granted to any developer beyond that 100-foot setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Gerald, Joe Ward.
Um, members of the planning and zoning board, my name is Barry Manuel. I reside over my wife at 4,600 North Ocean Drive. Uh, I speak to you this evening to ask you to, uh, follow the recommendations of the road staff and planning to adopt the 1997 Coastal Control Act, uh, line. Um, I'm a surgeon, and, uh, so I did a very major surgery at Boston Teaching Hospital. There's one thing surgeons learn very early, and that is you have to focus on what you're dealing with, the main issue. You cannot be distracted by a lot of peripheral noise. Many operating rooms are a lot of peripheral noise. And if you allow that to distract you from your main goal, patients suffer. I think i- in your role, you are pretty much like surgeons. You have a main issue before you, a number of citizens who are impacted by eroding beachfront. You, you have a statute passed by Florida Legislature, which, uh, passed this in order to, uh, protect the Florida's, uncoaching, to protect the Florida sandy beaches, adjacent beach and dune systems. Beaches and dunes are vital components of the dynamic coastal system that surrounds most of Florida. They go on to say that the CCL program protects the beach and dune systems from imprudent uplay and construction that could weaken damage and destroy the integrity of the beaches and dunes. So I ask you, don't be distracted by the noise. Don't be distracted by proprietary financial interests. Don't be distracted by constructing companies that wish to maximize their financial return. Exercise the proper, essential responsibility and protect those of us who are residents and pay our taxes here. Thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Good evening. Here on Ward, 3930 North Ocean. That's the furthest, most east point in the state of Florida, and, uh, we are a legal and a very inappropriate owner there, as well as a undivided interest in a strip to the south, uh, along the straits of Florida, uh, for access for home beachfronts. The, uh, materials in the back do not provide the public any of the supplemental materials that you received tonight. I thought Ms. Davis did an excellent job of 20 questions last meeting, which did not show up, uh, when, uh, the CDEC plan and its own administrator sent out the package, uh, last Thursday, a week ago. The state of Florida coastal construction control line is a jurisdictional line. It has no use as a line of prohibition. It is a regulatory line, and I have provided for the record an eight-page handout, of which on page two I've highlighted for each of you, uh, that control lines should not be confused with setback lines or lines as prohibition. Riviera Beach has a habit of getting in one lawsuit after another, and if this proceeds ahead with the 97 line as a setback line, as is proposed in part of this document, and it's amusing that, uh, Ms. Davis found what is supposedly a typo, for instance, on page eight. But you need not proceed with this line at this time. More importantly, uh, last meeting, uh, Mr. Colton, uh, scoped out of the planning and zoning administrator that, yes, this will be non-conforming for, uh, buildings that are waterlogged of the 1997 coastal construction control line, not setback line of the state. And, uh, it, it proceeds, if you take a look at the maps, there's 35 parcels, uh, of which there are only three north of 2,700 uh, that are not going to be non-conforming in the future. The city does have non-conforming regulations, definitions of 31 dash 1 of the code, and, uh, a provision, uh, at, uh, 31, uh, well, like always, 3179 of the code, uh, which we have defined non-conforming, not like the B and Z administrator said last meeting. But regardless, you won't be able to do anything of substance if you have made your casualties with buildings. You should defer again and let the council go back with instructions to, uh, the staff to do what was said about non-conformities and also go back to using it as a line of jurisdiction and keep the 79 in line.
Thank you. Final comment is Steven Ellis.
Hello, my name is Steve Ellis. My wife and I reside at 3,000 North Ocean Drive, Singer Island. Uh, we've been full-time residents of Singer Island and registered builders in Palm Beach County for a few years now. I'd like to confine my comments to vigorously urging this board to fully adopt the 1997 coastal construction control line, given consideration this evening, squarely based on the serious and likely irreversible environmental dangers that will ensue absent immediate adoption, and the unaffordable expenditures taxpayer funds and fighting on what we think, I think, would be a losing battle in the mother nature. Specifically, now, $500,000 or so of our taxpayer dollars are currently being spent here, as I understand it, on beach renourishment, uh, on Singer Island. A million to millions of millions of dollars of what I believe is wasted spending. Uh, that should be devoted to other, uh, more permanent, uh, public purposes, we believe. In addition, as has been discussed previously, properties on the north end of Singer Island have particularly severe erosion problems, with some now having their foundations fully exposed to water. This condition seems posed to now deserve itself on the south end of the island as well, from a, I'm, uh, faking from some, from this, this evening, from independent discussions. And anecdotally, the strong winds and tides in the recent few days have shown how high the water can actually come up on the beaches almost to the sea graves. So I strongly urge the board to require all, all new buildings, uh, being constructed on Singer Island to observe the 1997 CCL. But finally, and, and probably equally important, uh, is, I believe that all new such buildings, without any exception, uh, should, should meet this new regulation. This, we think, will help immensely to, to preserve our barrier reefs, our better, our barrier dunes and the beaches and keep our buildings invested and safe and, and hopefully our taxpayers whole. Thank you for, for allowing me to address the board on this issue this evening.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, I want to appreciate the turnout and the, uh, comments from, uh, from, uh, our citizens. We normally don't get this kind of turnout of planning and zoning, so. Mr. Gaggen, do you want to comment on some of the public comments?
What I'd like to do is make a few minor comments, then proceed with the RE section of the code that we have not yet reviewed. And then, once those sections are viewed, if there's additional board questions or responses to public comments that the board desires, that we have to do so at that time. Just touching on a few public comments, there were many. The first is the supplemental pack that was provided to the board that asks questions and answers. That is included within the public reference binder. It's in the back of the council chambers. We did print some copies, however, it was a large turnout tonight, so I'm assuming that those are incredibly exciting. If anyone does want to reference that material, it is within that binder currently. Additionally, there, there has been some reference to exemptions of certain properties from the regulations, and that pertains specifically to the Amber property in relation to the moratorium that was passed by the city council. Unfortunately, at this time, it really falls outside the purview of this board and, and our discussion. However, I believe the comments provided by, um, our citizens were, were heard loud and clear. Finally, within the supplemental information, and it was referenced multiple times, referenced specifically by one resident, is our non-conforming section of the code. So, uh, midway through the packet, it is provided, and that's article 4, non-conforming usage, specifically section 31 dash 79, titled Restorations. It clearly defines that any existing structure can be rebuilt if it's currently considered or in the future considered legally non-conforming, as long as it's not damaged above 100% and is assessed to value by fire, explosion, or other casualty, or active death. So there is a current section of the code that- So there is a current section of the code that does reference this. However, if the board did want to push that further and provides specific recommendations for those instructions, that's something that also could occur, but I just wanted to make sure that the board is well aware that we do have a section of the code that does discuss that and provides procedures. So at this point, I would like to proceed with the RH Resort Hotel District. That starts on page twelve of sixteen. So within page twelve, there are no amendments proposed. Within Section thirty-one dash five to eight regulations, a similar amendment that was previously proposed, which allows for signage for restaurants and shops by removing the part of Section A two, which states, "Which uses shall not have signs or displays visible from the public street." Within B, uses prohibited, there's a reference to the nineteen-ninety-seven coastal construction control line versus the nineteen-seventy-nine line. Within page fourteen, within item number five, minimum building setbacks, letter C, ocean, that has been amended to reflect the proposed change to the nineteen-ninety-seven coastal construction control line in comparison to the seventy-nine line, four twenty-five feet, the crest of the dune, whichever is greater. Within item number ten, A, that again refers to the regulation that requires a ten score. This provides additional flexibility for the developer or comfortable recreational space. And within ten, B, it also provides a little bit more flexibility than design criteria. Within Section thirty-one dash five three zero, parking, letter A, there is provision that requires, a proposed provision, that would require additional employee parkings applicable to the project, which currently is not contemplated. Within Section thirty-one dash five three one, landscaping, letter three, has a different language which states, "And to establish, and to reestablish the ecosystem," to tighten that language up, and also what was previously discussed by Ms. Davis. Item four has been added, which discusses environmentally sensitive land, wetlands, and other conservation and preservation areas, and requiring a buffer of native education plantage around that. There is no amendment proposed to the site plan of each section. And the Section thirty-one, five through three, property within the community development areas proposed to be stripped and removed, because it refers to the Inlet Harbor City review of the free development plan, and that's no longer functional. So those are the changes proposed within the RH some of the others.
Is that it? Okay. Any board comments on, actually, the whole package? Okay, let's start counting them. Mr. Wiggum, do you have any questions?
I have a question, Doug.
Okay. Mr. Colton, remember, we're addressing the whole package, each of the items.
I have one question, and it referred back to the answer you gave about the, and you answered my question regarding the calculation. Do you need to reference that there's a calculation? Do we need to reference that there's a calculation that, if needed, do we need to address that in here, or say that there's a calculation? It's just a question of would it be a necessary item in this package?
For your friends in density calculations?
Density calculations.
I don't know if I fully just get any questions. So a reference to how the density calculation is?
If it needs to be enacted, the density calculation, based on sometimes, would it need to be referenced in this package that there is a density calculation if this occurred in this package?
Yes, so the current code for the RM twenty and RMH twenty zoning districts, any development would use that calculation to obtain the maximum density calculation for that land area. So within the code, it is currently referenced, and the amendment proposed would basically make that calculation easier to do for us.
Good, thank you. Chris?
Okay, question. Where was the section that referred to the, to rebuild back and fix? What section was that?
Yes, so within the supplemental packet provided, I'm sorry, I don't have the pages numbered.
Just give me the numbers.
But it's Article four, nonconforming uses, and about three quarters of the way down, it's Section thirty-one dash seventy-nine, restorations. It follows, it follows the example of density transfer page and the Palm Beach Coast receipt in the package. And then also, if I may, as the board generates additional questions, just wanted to show a couple photos of the land area and some of the images that have prompted staff to revisit this. So these are at various locations on Singer Island.
When were they taken?
It all varies. Some were associated with specific storm events. They're all within the past ten years, I'd say. So during some of the larger storm events, there is definitely the potential for major
Does the board have any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Stacey?
Yes, with regard to density, I think your attorney or someone sort of translated that when you change, maybe I misunderstood, when the density changes as much from seventeen units per acre, as an example, seventeen units per acre from that to twenty, how does that, how do you calculate the increase of traffic? Or does?
Well.
I think, I thought I heard someone say that?
Yes, I believe it was comments in regards to additional density generating additional traffic, and that is normally the case. If you have more end users that want to come and go from a specific location and increase density, then there'd be more traffic. What's difficult to comprehend with a situation like this is the density alone is not the only governing factor associated with any development. There's multiple levels of the currency, including traffic review for any development. That's the traffic performance standard review letter that we receive from Palm Beach County, basically indicating that any proposed development would be able to be sustainable within the roadways and infrastructure that currently exists. So it's easy to look at just one segment, however, there's many, many inputs that end up governing what can actually be built on any given property.
And how many vacant pieces of property are there oceanfront to be built? Do you know? How many vacant pieces there are?
Technically, there is three parcels of the two properties. Thirty-one hundred, which is currently known as, well, historically known as the Amber property, and also thirty-seven thirty, which is just south of thirty-eight hundred, which is Zeta Resort. Those are the two that comes by.
Well, if you increase the density of new buildings, isn't that, based on the photographs you showed, doesn't that sort of put more people in harm's way?
There's been a wide conversation of increasing the density, however, the zoning code has to reflect what the comprehensive plan allows. So even though the zoning code currently references numbers lower than seventeen units per acre or up to twenty units per acre, if the Mihaw provisions are followed, because our comprehensive plan already references that, refers to it, that's the ultimate density that's currently allowed. So the fact that our zoning code is not a perfect match to our comprehensive plan does not somehow reduce the density. If anything, we're legally required to have our zoning code reflect what's provided in our comprehensive plan.
We could also change, reduce the comprehensive plan.
Technically, yes. That's not a simple look.
Okay. And so one of the guests also mentioned that community enhancement or enhanced, what development should, I guess, based on the Florida statute, enhance the neighborhood? Do you know about that?
I'm not sure of a specific reference.
Okay, and are we going to see the Amber plans?
Yes.
Okay. And also, nonconforming uses? Can we explain that? I mean, basically, I understand it, but there, it seems that there's going to be a real fallout or an impact, a negative impact to the entire community here based on the new coastal construction line, and the non, they will now be considered a nonconforming use. And then what does that, what's their, what's the financial impact of that? I mean, is it enormous? Is it? And if all that changes, does that mean the flood maps change, and that there's another component to this? Or is it all unrelated?
So if any building that currently exists, and most buildings that exist, would potentially be considered legally nonconforming, being that it would have been built eastward of the nineteen-ninety-seven coastal construction control line, if the code's amended to say that development can only occur, can only occur west of that line, then any building existing over that point would be considered legally nonconforming. So it's considered legal nonconforming because it was approved properly, it was permitted versus a building that's just nonconformance whatsoever, that was just built on permits or something of that nature. So again, the nonconforming section of our code would allow for restoration within Section thirty-one dash seventy-nine. Basically, if there was a catastrophic event that almost leveled the entire building, there would still be a possibility to rebuild it. However, when, again, similar to the traffic discussion we just had, there's always other factors that come into play. So if there were to be a catastrophic loss of that nature, the property owners and everyone that's a stakeholder within that project would have to weigh multiple decisions. One that's currently moving is FEMA regulations and flood elevations. So with those currently in process to be amended, would it be economically viable to restore a building that was built at flood elevation below those changing elevations? Is it better to build a new building, to restore it? So it does produce other elements that have to be worked through. However, there is a section that does provide for that scenario.
So even if we don't have anything catastrophic and these unit owners and buildings become le, they become legal nonconforming uses, is there a financial, negative financial impact when you add that to the new flood maps?
Yes, yes.
I don't know.
The audience would like to say yes. I would say that if it depends.
Order.
It would depend on what the existing development is, first of all. If you had a development that was maxed out to previous development regulations allowed, then yes, if you have a property that has a building that's not even close to it and is probably sixty years old, maybe not, so for the newer developments, long-term, there is potential for that. For other property owners looking to renovate existing sites, there may be space constraints put into play by moving the coastal construction control line for the setback line. So there could be financial implications, absolutely.
Okay, then one more thing, then I'll be quiet. On the coastal construction line, that, is that considered jurisdictional line? Is that, or is it a physical line?
Currently, the coastal construction control line is referenced within our code as a setback line. It really is a jurisdictional line as well, because anything eastward of that nineteen-seventy-nine line is really jurisdiction of Department of Environmental Protection. So I guess, I believe the answer is both.
So when, if we adopt this to the nineteen-ninety-seven coastal construction line, that's the same as a setback? Will that be the same as a setback line, or will there be an additional setback from the new coastal construction line? Or can they build up to the coastal construction line?
The way that the code amendment is proposed, there will be no additional setback from that line. The line itself will be utilized as the setback line.
Mr. Hamilton?
What was, what was Inlet Harbor? I'm trying to hear, sorry, what was? The last item we read that was completely structural in that harbor, harbor center?
That was, we had a section of our code that basically has been taken over from, by the CRA overlay, and it historically was called Inlet Harbor District.
That's part of the Riviera Beach, huh?
I don't believe that the Inlet Harbor area had contemplated that section of the city. I believe it was really close to the intersection of Broadlands and Perron. Then it expanded eastern out to Singer Island. And Chairperson, if I may, we did receive correspondence.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Campbell?
Sorry.
Go ahead. What's your comment?
If I may, we did receive correspondence. I wanted to reference the fact that we received correspondence previously from Palm Beach County Department of Environmental Resource Management, that was dated November seventh, twenty-fourteen, that was included in our packet. Additionally, we received correspondence from Mr. Redon, signed by Mr. Patrick Weber, that was partially read into the record, it was also provided in the supplemental information. And finally, we received correspondence from Sally Baralada and Luisa Salda. And they did ask that it be read into the record. I don't know if you'd like to read it or if you'd like to... I don't know if you'd like to read it or if you'd like me to summarize it.
Go ahead, you can read it.
And we received correspondence on October first of this year with address to Councilman Harada, as well as Ms. McFinn, Director of Development. It states, "I have been a property owner on Singer Island for the past seven years and have thoroughly enjoyed the beauty and peacefulness of the area. I currently own Suite Eight A at the Tierra Colony and have just learned that the Riviera Beach City Council is allowing the developers of the Amrit property an exemption from the coastal building moratorium in October of July. We're concerned about this exemption and understand that additionally, the Amrit developers are requesting the construction of more units than was originally planned and that they are planning to put their service road directly under our windows. It would my understanding that you represent the residents of this community, our quality of life, and our concerns regarding the erosion of our beaches. Please understand that we purchased our unit, which will let the Amrit property directly, with a full understanding that the project will be built. However, we have a hard time understanding these concessions. Why allow the construction so close to the beach when you know that we have already experienced coastal erosion and sand loss in the area? Has the council, together with Palm Beach County, allocated hundreds of thousands of dollars each year to combat this problem? Why all the special exceptions? Why allow them to put their service road directly under our windows when they can just easily put it to the north side of the complex where there are four or five-story parking under the guest rooms of the Marriott? As owners of a commercial car, Car and True Company, who have worked with developers in the New York City area for the past twenty-three years, we know what is important to them: destiny. Allow them their original units, if you must, but please do the right thing on behalf of the owners of the Tierra and force them to adhere to the nineteen ninety-seven coastal construction control regulations and have them relocate their service road to the north side of the property. We're welcoming the opportunity to acquire any discussions with our team and with the developer as I believe we have a unique perspective on the step of development. Enclosing a service entrance or further from the beach will not decrease the developer's bottom line. Contrary to that, greatly obstructing our views as well as disrupting our peace and quiet with the service entrance will devalue our investments. Please, let's be good neighbors from the start." Please read this and add this to the minutes of the upcoming meeting on the eleventh of December. Thank you for consideration. Signed, Luis A. Salda and Sally Baralada.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I have a couple of questions for you. One, seems that even though it's really not part of this meeting, the Amrit seems to have surfaced as a major issue, the exemption that they received. So I think it's something that we're going to have to address. But talking about setbacks for a second from the ninety-seven line, I'm reading here, minimum building setbacks front. Main structure more than two stories and height a hundred feet. So what are we calling in this case the front? Is it the A-one-A?
Front of the east, north of the harbor, A-one-A.
Okay. And then, of course, the two, the additional for everything over two stories is an additional setback. So what we're saying with this, that the building can go up to the ninety-seven line on the ocean side.
The proposed code amendment would have the setback line on the ocean side for any development be the nineteen ninety-seven coastal construction control line.
Okay. To just be clear on it, that means this, any part of the structure cannot, so if there's a stairway going down, that stairway has to be at no further east than the ninety-seven line?
There, there would be allowance for beach access, dune walkways, that type of thing.
Understood that.
Yes.
What I'm saying is, it's an extension of the building. No part of the building or extension of the building, like a staircase, can go beyond the seventy, the ninety-seven line?
It would be the building setback, so unless it was, the staircase was somehow associated with beach access to the dune, that would be the setback line.
All right. Okay, I have, I have no other questions. So any other questions from the board? Okay, I guess we're looking for a motion? Thinking through.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance, and forgive me, I left my glasses, to review the ordinance, to review of the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, amended in chapter thirty-one of the City Code of Ordinance entitled zoning, Article Five, District Regulations, Division Nine, RM Twenty, High Density, Multi-Family Dwelling District, and Division Ten, RM H Twenty, High Density, Multi-Family Hotel District, and Division Twenty-five, RH Resort Hotel District, by amended property development standards associated with ocean setback, coastal construction, and development density in order to promote increasingly, sustainability development, design, designs on Singer Island, provided for
Conflicts.
Conflicts, sever,
Severability.
Severability
Cultification.
And cultivation and providing an effective day.
Okay, we have a motion and we're looking for a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hamilton, you're seconding?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or comment on this? I'd like to, I'd like to ask just one question. The, the exception for Amrit was given by City Council?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like, I think the board, we ought to consider amending the motion to include that in this change, there are no exceptions.
Well, you have a motion and a second, you have to go through them.
So.
You have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
So don't you have to call the vote?
No, we can have a discussion.
This is a point, Board, if there's a discussion on the, the motion on the floor, the motion either could amend the motion if they choose to.
If they choose to, your option is to choose to amend it or not to.
I would choose to accept the amended, proposed. Second.
Okay, we have a motion amended.
I need to re-read. I think the clarification, it might be good to restate what the amended the motion was. I think that you all understand what the original motion was, but what is the amendment?
That there's no exception, special exceptions.
Yeah, that, that there are no exceptions to the new ordinance.
From any property? The new ordinance on any property?
I think that's clear. No exceptions to the ordinance. Okay. You okay with that, Jeff?
Yes, the board would have to second that motion as well.
It was seconded by Mr. Hamilton. Okay. Okay, we have a motion amended and seconded, call the roll.
Artful Hudson?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wiegert?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
No.
Michelle Bruce?
Yes.
Edith Gudley?
Yes.
Forty-five, the five-two-one, Miss Davis, is saying things, motion approved.
Great, I just like to thank all the public participation and we're glad to see you here. Okay, next item. New business.
Yes, tonight, under new business, on the item of new business, we will review the ordinance of the City Council, the City of New York, Palm Beach County, Florida, amended chapter twenty-eighth of the City's浊 ordinance, entitled signs, section twenty-eight dash one definitions, and section twenty-eight dash five prohibited signs, and also by creating a new section, dead of digital signs in order to create standards for installation and use of digital signage on property within a community facility, CF zoning district, providing conflicts, severability, complication, and providing effective data. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Principal Planner, Deonis Bradley, who will provide a presentation on this item for the final voting for tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Deonis Bradley, Principal Planner. Just to give you an overview of what we're trying to do, the city desires to communicate with residents through modern technologies such as digital signs. Currently, the浊 ordinances prohibit the use of animated signs except for digital billboards. And SELL has prepared language to incorporate digital signs into the浊 ordinances. Just to give you an overview of the proposed language, we're proposing for digital signs to be permitted only within the community facilities zoning district. They were, based on regulations that we are proposing, only one digital sign is allowed per site. That sign is allowed up to a maximum square foot of a hundred square feet. And that's part of street confidence, so totally get, we get two hundred square feet, one hundred on one side, a hundred on the other side. We felt like, they're not allowed within two hundred fifty feet of a residential structure or residential zoning. Not allowed within thirty of an intersection. The messages they must stay on for a minimum of at least six seconds before attaching to the next message. The signs must be turned off in between the hours of ten-thirty P.M. and six A.M. The brightness of the sign must inform to the predetermined ambient lighting setting that will not impact drivers in a harmful manner. The sign must have a default mechanism to turn off to black in the event of a malfunction. The benefits of the digital signs, the city will be able to rapidly display public emergency alerts such as amber, silver, blue alerts. The city will also be able to display traffic alerts, public safety, or any emergency management information such as hurricane evacuation, tornadoes. We will also be able to display public meetings, town hall workshops, or state sponsored events, something like the Jazz and Park event, something like that will be on there. Just to give you an idea of where these signs are being permitted, currently under the community facilities zoning district, it, it permits municipal services and accessory buildings and structures. Basically, that's talking about your city hall, fire stations, libraries. It would also be allowed at city owned or municipal owned and operated parks and recreation areas, or educational facilities such as colleges and universities, schools, both public and private, vocational schools, training centers, and seminars. Other uses, pretty much, there are other uses allowed, but they have to be something under the direct control of the municipality and that is done by special exception. They're also committed at state or county parks, state, federal buildings and facilities. Wanted to provide you a copy of some existing digital signs in the area. Right now, down there is Palm Beach Gardens at their state hall, right on Military Trail there. The one on the left is Palm Beach Gardens High School and the one on the right is Sun Coast Community High, right here in Riviera Beach. These are just some examples of some signs that are located outside of the area. SELL is recommending the board to consider approving the ordinance, which amends the City浊 ordinance to permit digital signs in community facilities zoning district. If the board had any questions regarding the actual language, if you want, we can go through that, or if you have a public comment, fine, we can address that right now.
We have one public comment, Mr. Ward.
Good evening again, Earl Ward, twenty-one thirty-five Broadway. Obviously, the sign code Riviera Beach is, is a product of CDEC after she came here in ninety-six and it truly is, is backward. It does not serve the businesses of the town. We do need digital signs, but you, you have no real justification for just saying we'll give it to government facilities. The modernization of the world is to make information conveyed to the folks that use the roadways and need quick access to the information. Why we're just kowtowing to government makes me question it. And if you go to the last item on the, the item ten, which is on page four of four, five hundred dollar fine. Well, I suspect that part of that is the inherent fight that goes on between this suburban CRA district and the city to take a go and find the CRA if they got a, a sign that they didn't like or some operation. Obviously, Sun Coast has school district supremacy and that sign, I notice several times a week, is informative to us. It produces good information. Back two decades ago, in the prior CDEC, we, we got the money together to build the brick monument out front. I insisted that they put conduits all the way back to the building so we could, when we got more money to do variable message facilities, that they have the ability. Back then, we didn't have wireless and things of that nature to convey the information without conduits. But it does provide the power. So we have delayed for decades in getting Riviera Beach to be able to advise people on a very heavily traveled street and the, what's going on in the city. So we need this type of ordinance. It should be, though, for the entire community so that businesses can take advantage of it and we become a more modern city than we have been in the last couple of decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any board comments? Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Is there a style that you're, a particular style that you would like to maintain or require?
Currently, right now, we don't have any concept, but we're leaning more to the north direction of something like, I said, Palm Beach Gardens.
And you have size? Was there something in here about size?
Yes, ma'am, it was a hundred square feet, basically like a ten by ten.
And would be light, do you have any special colors, like the blue sign with white?
No, because those are, they change, they can be blue, they can be green. They can have like a visual picture on it, it's totally programmable, really a computer.
You mean, for instance, where does, that all the blue around City Hall, is that all digital too?
That is.
Thanks.
That's it. Mr. Hamilton?
Will this be expanded to include businesses?
It will be, staff will be bringing it back any later date, but currently, right now, we're only dealing with community facilities right now, but it will be expanded to different places later date.
Mr. Hamilton? Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
Why are you turning the signs off at ten thirty and then back on at six A M? What's the purpose of that? If you're, to give out information, why won't someone at ten thirty want to see the information?
I mean, that's a good argument, we just kind of felt that going third times of the night, a lot of people wouldn't be going through, but in the event of emergency, you know, we can definitely language that. It's expanded to emergencies, but something that's saying town hall meeting or something like that.
But I think that's important, I mean, there are people that work at night that.
I mean, they can be amended, depending on the timeframe that we hang on to, but they can be amended.
For the purposes that you're putting them up, I think it's a good idea that they're twenty-four hours. I mean, if it's for information, it should be ongoing, especially if you're saying it's an amber alert, some silver alert. All those things are ongoing, just a comment.
Okay. Cole?
How many signs are proposed, or do you have an idea how many signs are going to be placed at certain locations?
The way that the code is written currently right now, City Hall is pretty much the only area in the city that can be permitted.
But if City Hall is the only location, I don't necessarily cross the the tracks here going east. I think it would be more feasible if you have it more westward towards ninety-five. You have a sign that sits in ninety-five, not ninety-five, I mean, Blue Heron and Gardens, that's placed there already. Why not enhance that area for all the residents that are mainly going back and forth, and not just from City Hall on?
If I may, Jeff Yagan, planning zone administrator. I feel like the true intent of this code is just really a baby step. So, there's nothing that would prohibit us from expanding the use of this type of signage in the future. However, similar to the digital billboards that the Planning Zone Board saw probably four years ago now. You know, we have a national sort of negative repercussions associated with those, that gave us comfort to move forward with this type of signage. So, the way that the code is written, it would allow for really any parcel that has community facility zoning. For the most part, any parcel's own in that manner could have one of these signs. So, it's something that's being investigated further by the city, but even still, at this point, we don't have a specific sign style or product picked out, because this step is our first step in order to enable us to move forward to consider that.
I understand the baby steps, but even within the baby steps, it would be more of an impact to the community. If, for example, you place it, develop it, do solar power out in the area where I was mentioning, where it impacts the whole city, and you'll have a much, you'll have a better idea much earlier if the citizens say, oh, we love it, instead of just placing it in one area that a lot of citizens don't necessarily come to City Hall every day. Just instead of waiting, spending the money here in City Hall, spending the money there where it's more impact on the citizens, you'll have more community involvement much sooner than it would be at City Hall.
I could definitely see that being a point, and I think we're partially following the trend of this type of signage at other local municipalities or other schools throughout the area where that main spot, that main headquarters seems to function as the main campus for signage, but I could definitely see a benefit in having signage elsewhere, and it kind of becomes a discussion politically of where the sign should be, what's the best location, and also what's the overall cost for, let's say, if you want to do multiple signs, how much it really costs to implement, so.
But you still get that, you still get that argument as far as multiple signs, if you place it in City Hall, compared to placing it where I suggested on Blue Heron, and it'll still be a cost initially. So, make that initial cost a much bigger impact and wider impact on the citizen on the main street. Most, Palm Beach Gardens is on Military Trail, there's a lot of traffic on Military Trail compared to A one eight. So, yes, although the sign is closer to the municipality there in the building, this location of City Hall isn't as exposed as Military Trail compared to Blue Heron, Blue Heron and Gardens Road where it would have a greater impact. You're going to spend the money anyway, if that's what you're going to do. Make it have better, thicker impact on the citizens, because ninety-five percent of the citizens in Riviera Beach travel from eastward here, Blue Heron to ninety-five. There's a small amount that goes to Congress and Palm Beach Lake, but they're going to end up coming one way or another, on Blue Heron, the back of the city. So, make it located there, use solar power. That'd be my suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
I expect the sign to be a very good idea, and I want us to approve it tonight so we can decide, because I think it needs some information going around in the city, especially at our parks. People want to go back to parks, but if you don't sign it there, there are no worries, security is there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Cole has a good idea to kind of generate a little broader usage of it, but in reading this, it says signage on property within the community facility zoning district. So, it sounds that this is limiting this, that you can only put it on a something's own community facility. So, to put it on, you can't put it on private property.
Correct.
Correct? So, you know, as an answer to that, you know, we do have, I don't know, four or five fire rescue stations around the city would be ideal places to, you know, to put these signs.
Yeah, and they definitely could go there, as long as they meet that requirement of the two hundred fifty feet away from a residential structure or residential zoning, they definitely could go there.
Okay. Now, does this have any impact on the speed signs that the police put up?
No, sir.
No, okay. All right, I have no other questions. Any other questions? If not, our, go ahead. Mr. Hamilton?
Everything going on, really a comment, yeah, well, you have the fire station that's located near approximately three, and traffic, probably four schools that pass by that area. There's a water park there. I think the language and this proposed should be amended where if that particular fire station does not meet that criteria, those measurements should be amended, so that particular location should be included.
I think that if we do encounter that situation where there is that push to install a sign at a fire station or to say that location would not fall within to the criteria proposed, the same way that the items coming toward the Planning Zone Board tonight, an amendment can be proposed in order to allow that. We get the Planning Zone Board's input, and then we go through a city council for a final adoption of ordinance, I'm sure. So, we still have the flexibility to amend it further in the future, it's just, it's always more difficult to retract versus baby steps or so. Areas own community facility are not only city owned. There's other areas that are either school districts or other private ownership could potentially have community facilities on the district, so we just want to be cautious as we implement this, because even when you think you're planning for everything, there's always other factors that come to play. So, staff would definitely be amenable to amending the code, particularly in the future if there's a development proposed that doesn't somehow meet the criteria.
There's no other questions on Cole? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cole.
One comment.
Go ahead.
Has staff considered overhead digital signs, just like what you see on ninety-five with amber alerts, things of that nature? Has staff been considered as part of, say, you put it like those road stop signs now, you put it on one of those? Or can that be a part, not the road, you know, the stoplights?
For any sort of traffic devices, it kind of falls outside of purview of this code, so we don't really contemplate that style of signage for this. Even does fall within, let's say, F dot right away, they have their own laws that govern sign. So, that's why on, let's say, Interstate ninety-five, they'll have digital displays that inform drivers of ongoing items. In that space, we govern by their own rules and regulations.
All right, thank you. No other comments? Cole for a moment.
Before you do, I just want to clarify the language as far as the ten P M to six A M. Did you want to keep that, or did you want staff to amend that?
I would like to see no limit on their timeframe.
Yeah, I think that it's a digital sign, we ought to be just communicating twenty-four seven.
Okay.
Cole for a motion.
I think a motion would be approve the project with. On no timeline, on any timeframe.
Second?
Got second.
Okay. Cole for a roll?
Arturo Hamilton?
Go.
Brian Fulton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggan?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Michelle Bruce?
Yes.
Henry Canuti?
Yes.
Mr. Bass is five two one.
All right, move on to item A, general discussion. We have two public comment cards, J B Dixon? Okay, that's short comment. Gerald Ward, looks like this is going to be a short comment, you have seven items you want to comment on?
You stirred the pot so bad tonight that I just kept adding to the two I had. Gerald Ward, twenty-one thirty-five Broadway and thirty-nine thirty, North Ocean, on the beach side. I would tell you that your time spent last month on minutes was certainly profitable. You finally got up with the rest of the world and got back to something, and we were back in the eighties where we had good minutes. So, you sometimes do need to take the time, and you did so. Most importantly, next Monday, fourteen hundred to seventeen hundred, two o'clock to five o'clock at the Children's Service Center down on High Ridge Road. The delegation of Palm Beach County, senators and representatives will meet to consider local bills. Once again, the Port of Palm Beach is filing the same bill they filed last year, except they're cutting out the language that allows Riviera Beach to have any say on anything in the port. There's two different sections, if you will have this out to more than the location, and I would suggest that the city be involved. The city staff should have brought you this, because ordinances or laws of this nature have been brought to you in the past when the port has attempted to modify their special acts. It is, it is an amazing seventy-page document. They also propose to take off the adware tax cap, which we put on in the nineteen seventies to specifically say ports are enterprise-type entities, and they need to make money themselves and not tax the public. But this gang is now intending to get rid of that cap. We also have several other owner's provisions, but you can go in on the delegation page, which you have a copy of now, and call down the PDF on that. The city of Riviera Beach Marina, CRA Wednesday night, had a report for the first one hundred and fifteen days of the so-called project after they threw away the Tiki, and they now have been delayed eighty-eight days. So, they've lost eighty-eight days in the one hundred and fifteen days of the report. The supplemental materials, I came early tonight, I did not see them, there was a stack this tall of the main report, but no supplementals. Gary Nichols, our property appraiser, Ms. Davis clearly is the assessor of the value for non-conforming uses. And although none of you are condo commandos of the thirty-five properties affected, I would tell you, none of you will accept your building value, a hundred percent of your building value, and rebuild the building for that amount. So, the code, which I cited to you, thirty-one seventy-nine, is effectively so restrictive that nobody can use the restoration provisions, because they don't meet a hundred percent assessed criteria that Gary Nichols would give them. I think the other items, we can go through that. Well, I could go through FEMA. The notices are out, and your ninety days will probably start, and I will be giving some of you a copy of the federal registered notice or the public notices that says all of these condos up north of the furthest most east are going to meet the toe of the doom. It's not got anything to do with elevations really, it's a regulation of FEMA. So, if you want to get something done, you're going to have to appeal that. And unfortunately, it's, I'm only talking to the minutes, I guess, because nobody here, other than me, understands or is affected correctly by the FEMA regulations. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You're up, Jeff.
Correspondence, the only correspondence received was previously noted, three letters. Now, you're up.
Okay, board comment, any board comments? Mr. Hamilton?
I guess I'll repeat the same comment as last time, I think we ought to get, like they're talking about digital, and they were critical where people who are absent might be able to attend meetings. I'm very disappointed with your response from staff as far as that issue, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, I think, you know, there's sort of lots of little things that we, like the mobile home, that they show mobile homes on. the mobile home, that they show mobile homes on Sinner Island, um, and I know you don't want to address that now, but maybe there are lots of little tidbit regulations that are rather landyish regulations that we need to work on so that everything complies, I mean, we also have other inconsistencies from last, you know, on the seven-eleven, and so we need to address those at some point, too, um, so maybe there are others that we can just sit down at a workshop meeting and go through a bunch of miscellaneous, landyish regulations that need to comply with a comprehensive plan or vice versa, and have some kind of a study or a workshop, so that we don't get in trouble.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Is that possible?
Oh, sorry.
Um, yeah, I, I think you're, you're on point with your discussion of, um, I guess it's not only just small sections of the code, but, um, I think a good example would be our, our sign code in its entirety, um, a majority of it is rather old, I think a majority of it is still based off of language that was adopted in nineteen fifty-seven, um, so, that, that's just one example, um, so, staff has lined up multiple projects that are, that are going to work on amending and updating codes that, that definitely needs to be revised at this point in time.
So can we also work on the inconsistencies of the, of a corner of Broadway and Blue Heron? Because now the building's for sale, we don't want that to seven-eleven.
Right, what...
So how could we...
I guess, well, so, even, even changes, updates, amendments, require a lot of analysis, and, and also the process itself requires a lot of input, um, so, even though, you know, changing one line of code and seeing the select, potentially small thing could be a rather, a rather large, um...
The impact.
Undertaking, and, and most certainly, impact can be large as well.
All right, thanks.
Hi, Ms. Brooks?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for the card I received, um, the sympathy card I received for the, uh, loss of my father, I have my thank you card, I'm taking it out of my wallet, but I just want to just be sure, I want to thank you for the sympathy card I received from Plankton zoning the board, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Mr. Cole?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wiggan? Any comments? No? Uh, I only have one comment, which I've brought up a few times, uh, when we approved of Marad Canopy Palms, when they built the first tower, uh, we gave them the, uh, we gave them the leeway not to decorate the west, uh, the west side of the building with the, uh, facade that they were gonna put on, and, until they did the second building, well, second building's done, and they didn't do it, so it was part of the approval process that we gave them, so, I think that would brighten it up and make that, uh, make it look a lot better. That's it. Um, motion, John?
Time motion, John.
Second, good.
Yeah, you're right.
Do you know what the year of progress is coming out? Or do you know what's coming up next month?
I don't know yet, just because it's, it's past the holidays, and, uh...
Okay, good job.
Thank you.